Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order by rule call, see that all council members are present with the exception of Councilwoman Kukavas, who's excused this evening. We'd like to welcome those of you who are with us here this evening, as well as those who may be watching on television or some other device. We'd like to begin tonight, ask those who would like to join us in prayer to please stand. Following the prayer, we'll have asked council member Alsop to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our dear, kind Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to meet together tonight as Cholo City Council members and citizens. Father, we're grateful for this great community that we live in and for the privileges that we have and our freedoms and our rights. We're grateful for those people who have given their lives for our freedom and those who continually serve in the armed forces. We pray that thou be with them and their families and watch over and protect them at all times. Father, we're grateful for the knowledge we have of good things and we pray that we'll be able to do things according to thy guidance and direction tonight, that we'll deliberate things at best of our abilities. We're grateful for the responsibilities that we have. We ask thee to bless this land and we're grateful for the worship that we receive. In these things we say in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Could join me in a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one ancient abad of indubitable liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, we'd like to begin with a call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that's within the jurisdiction of the city may do so. Comments may be limited to three minutes and you can address the city council as a whole. And at the end, we can respond to criticism made or ask staff to review a matter or a matter to be put on a certain agenda. Tonight, Freddie Lara is our first speaker who would like to call to the public. Thank you, Freddie.
My name is Freddie Lara. I'm a Shriner, living in Cholo. And I would like to introduce my brother, Steve Beersley. He's going to give you some information as to what we do and who we are.
Thank you, Freddie. Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager, Staff, thank you so much for the time this evening. I'm president of the White Mountains Shrine Club. And as we have a few of the additional Shriners with us this evening, we'd like to tell you a little bit about who and what we are. We've been in the White Mountains for 40 years and yet we're constantly asked, "I didn't know there are any Shriners up here." What do you do? Well, I'm here to solve that question, hopefully. A lot of people consider Shriners, if they know anything about them all, they see guys in funny hats and parades in little cars. We are much more than that. The White Mountain Shrine Club is part of the El Zareba Shrine Temple located in Phoenix and we're part of Shrine International, whose function is the support and care of children in North America. We support 23 hospitals specializing in burn treatment, cleft palate repair, and orthopedic We want every parent in the White Mountains to know that Shriners are here. What we do is bring love to the rescue. What we strive to do is let every parent know that they have access to these 23 hospitals without any cost to themselves. If they have a child that's injured and needs help, we're here to bring the love and the cure so every child has the benefit and the opportunity to enjoy a full and meaningful and happy life. You're going to see more of us this coming year around Cholo and the rest of the White Mountains as we endeavor to not only participate in the parades and the public events, but also ask for money. It takes anywhere from a million to a million and a half dollars a year to support our hospitals. And again, the patient is never charged beyond what they're able to provide. We provide transportation from home to the hospital that serves their particular needs. Two closest hospitals to Cholo are located in Los Angeles and Salt Lake City.
I'm going to yield three more minutes of my time, so keep going, okay? But we just have to, you know, let you know that-
I'm just about done.
No, you're fine. You've got another three minutes and maybe another council member will give you more. Keep going.
It's all about the children. That's what we do. February is the beginning of Burn Awareness Month for Shrine International. And we have age-appropriate literature available to anyone in Cholo that would like to have, let's say, a little comic book that their child can read and color and play with that will help make them aware of some of the hazards within the home. So please ask us. We have lots of them available and we're happy to give them out. And if anyone would like more information about Shrine International, please contact us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment. That poster, do you have one out there on our bulletin board in the library? It'd be nice to hang that poster out there on your way out.
That one is yours.
Thank you, John.
Do you have a phone number to get in touch? If I may, leave my card with someone.
You can also put that on the bulletin board.
Would you, could I leave it with you?
Just leave it. That's fine.
Thank you.
Now, you guys are a great organization and we appreciate what you do in the community and the support that you give. I had a grandson that was born up in Idaho and right there is one of the great Shriner hospitals there in Spokane, Washington. And it was great that he was able to have his foot turned back around and things after birth. So, you know, I know firsthand and I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
I hope he's doing well still.
Doing well.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
That's what it's about. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Anyone else call to the public? Seeing no one else moved, I'll turn the time to Justin Johnson. Our next item is special events. Justin Johnson, presentation of the mid-year financial report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2016.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to take a few minutes tonight to brief the council and mayor on our financial status mid-year fiscal year 2016. As a reminder, our budget year starts July 1, goes through June 30. So the data we're going to be reviewing tonight is as of December 31st, so we're 50% through the year. And we'll be using that as our benchmark for measuring revenues and expenses. We'll take a look at general fund revenues and expenses, sales tax, state share revenues, and utility fund status. Not going to get into all the details of the general fund revenues. You can look on the far right and see where we're at in comparison to the full fiscal year and 48.2%. And I will report that some of the state share revenues and some of the taxes are not reported yet for December because they trickle in 30 to 45 days after the month closes. So the realistic number that we're looking there is above 50% for revenues. As far as expenses go, we're at 33.9%. No real concerns in this category either, well below the budget. And we're looking forward to a good second half to match our first half. Our sales tax data, this slide is similar to the one presented at the budget study session a couple of weeks ago. Our sales tax numbers are trending very nicely for the year. Through 50% of the year, we're at 58% of our sales tax revenue collected, which is about $250,000 ahead of the budget last year. So we're trending well for there, too, with four of our six months being ahead of schedule. State share revenues for this slide, you'll also note that we're at 42% with all of December not being reported yet. We've reviewed the data and we expect to get some of that data in the next week or two, but we're right at 50%, right at the mark for state share revenues as well. Fines and forfeitures, 55% of the budget. And photo enforcement, as you know, that's has been discontinued, but we still have revenue trickling in. And we didn't budget for any, so any amounts we receive for that account will be ahead of schedule for the revenue side. The airport revenue, leases and fees, we're ahead of schedule at 60% with fuel, oil, and resale, we're at 38%. And the reason for that slight decrease is not the volume of sales, it's just the dollar amount of sales with the fuel prices dropping. But that also evens out on the expenditure side because we're spending less money to purchase the fuel also. Our utility funds are all tracking very well. Had some large projects going on in the fall of last year, especially in wastewater. And in sanitation, that's just pass-through for the garbage, so we don't really make money there. We do have a surcharge to address our administrative needs, but everything's tracking well for sanitation. And same goes for the expenditure side. Water, wastewater, and sanitation are all tracking very well. In summary, we feel like we're in a good position for our mid-year. We feel like our expectation for the rest of the year to continue with the same trends. We don't really have any concerns at this point. I would entertain any questions from Mayor of the Council.
Questions, council members? I appreciate what you're doing and, you know, the report concise and to the point. Is there anything that you have an alarm at all on anything or concern?
No.
All right. We appreciate that. Next item we have is the consent calendar. Is there an item that needs to be polled on the consent calendar separately? Now, I'll read those items that we have. We had consideration of approval of purchase and award of a professional service contract for computer networking equipment for the police department. Consideration of reappointment of associate magistrates. Consideration of the second addendum to non-commercial ground lease, assigning the lease from Joa Marsha Fagan to Burke and Michelle DeLing. Consideration of approval of declaration of surplus property for the February 2016 auction and the consideration of the minutes of the Cholo City Council study session January 19th and the regular meeting of January 19, 2016. Have a motion by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Crittenden. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. Thank you. Next item we have is new business, consideration of resolution number R 2016-03, rescinding resolution number 2015-31, and approving intergovernmental agreement with other jurisdictions for regional dispatch. Chief Shelley.
Mayor and City Council, at the December 1, 2015 meeting, the city council was presented with the intergovernmental agreement for regional dispatch services involving the seven major jurisdictions. As agreed, all seven jurisdictions presented the same intergovernmental agreement, the IGA, to their prospective governing bodies for consideration and adoption, which is the Cholo City Council approved of the IGA through resolution R 2015-31. Two jurisdictions, however, voted not to approve the agreement. The remaining entities subsequently met to discuss the feasibility of proceeding forward and the consensus was that the regional dispatch remained a highly viable concept. Consequently, the IGA was amended to include five, not seven jurisdictions. The five jurisdictions are Navajo County, City of Cholo, City of Holbrook, the town of Pinetop Lakeside, and the fire districts, which will have one jurisdiction board entity. Those fire districts are Timber Mesa, Pinetop, White Mountain Lakes, Pinedale Clay Springs, Joseph City, Sun Valley, and the Hebrew Over Guard. All other provisions in the IGA remain the same. Mr. Mutter, Mr. Brown, and myself are available for any comments. I just kind of skipped through most of those, but that's the highlights of the background in this.
Thank you. Any questions? Vice Mayor?
I guess my concern, I know this is just to keep going, moving forward, but do we have a location yet? I mean, I know where we're going to put this. I know there's a couple of places you guys talked about, but shouldn't we know where we're going to go with this before we sign an agreement to go into a contract with the other agencies?
Mayor and Vice Mayor, are you talking about location of the actual center itself?
Right.
Yeah, the location of the center itself, one will still be in the Holbrook section. The second one will be over at Cholo, which will be housed inside the new police station over there off of the deuce.
That was getting to my next question because that's not ready yet. Is this like a couple of years down the road?
Yes, it is. Mayor and City Council, yeah, this is going to be a couple of years down the road just because of the RMS systems, the software and hardware's all have to be upgraded, so we're taking it on a step-by-step basis. So we'll have kind of overlapping services within the jurisdiction so that we don't miss anything.
And can I keep going?
Sure.
And how long is this agreement? I mean, is this like forever? How does that work?
Mayor and City Council, I believe it was 10 years, but-
10 years, but I mean, it can be continued.
And the last one, I think, the other ones that didn't get on board, they're probably going to sit back and realize maybe they should get on board. Is that something that they can jump into later?
Yes. In fact, future subscribers, including the two that declined to participate, may be added to the system if requested at a later time.
Councilmember Alsop.
Thank you, Mayor. To go back to the last, not the last question, but the question before that about a 10-year I'm trying to remember during the other conversations, if we get involved into this and we're into everything, in 10 years, if we try to come out of this agreement, is there going to be PSAPs for us to get back into or what's going to happen to our scenarios?
Mayor and City Council, the PSAP actually stays with the City of Cholo. The entities themselves, so the geographical areas will basically be split into, the county will be split into, and the third spot would be in the middle of us, which is Snowflake Taylor. If they join us, then that PSAP will be split or put into one of the other centers itself. And they chose not to do that at this time. So our PSAP still stays with the City of Cholo and is going to stay in our jurisdictional area. But remember that this is being run by a governing board, which will be county, which will be Navajo County employees. So if this does, or we choose to come back to the City of Cholo, or excuse me, City of Cholo Regional Dispatch or our dispatch center, then that's something that we'd have to look at that time.
So is a 10-year just a jump-off point where you can talk about extending the contract or what are you doing with the 10 years?
Yeah, I think it's anticipated this will extend for a long time, but 10 years was set because there's so much upfront cost to get this thing going.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Crittenden.
No, I was going to make a motion.
I was just wondering about the scalability of the system that we're installing. We're going to take into consideration, all of a sudden, the other entities that decided not to come in will say that looks like a good idea. Will we incur any costs after the installation or will we build a scalability into it?
Mayor and City Council, I think there's a little bit of both on this. The scalability for us is our system itself, actually, when I say "our," I'm talking about the entity itself, will be able to grow with the communities as well as cover the actual calls for service that we would anticipate right now. So we would be able to cover that right now, but there will be a cost that will be incurred by the entities that want to come in that would help cover that cost. We wouldn't be paying all of it upfront. It would be incurred by them to come in and then it would be shared cost throughout everything else after that point.
Have we built into the intergovernmental agreement that if they do decide to come on, there will be some costs associated with that late decision?
What it says in the agreement is that if they come in before we get operational, they can come in at the same cost as everybody else right now. After we become operational, then they'll have to have approval of the governing board, which they will set the rate at which they come in. We don't know what it'll cost two or three, four years down the road, but it'll be determined by the governing board, which is made up of the five members.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Crittenden.
I move to rescind resolution number R 2015-31 and adopt resolution number R 2016-03, approving an intergovernmental, pardon me, intergovernmental agreement with local jurisdiction for regional dispatch and authorize a mayor to sign all documents, including signing any minor amendments to the intergovernmental agreement which occur after council approval.
Thank you. We have a motion seconded by councilmember Alsop. Any other discussion?
I do have, I do have one more comment. I guess my whole point of those questions were is I hate to see us, I think this is a great idea. I hope it works. After hearing this for as many years as we have, it seems like it's a great idea. I just don't want to see us get into a temporary situation like, okay, Holbrook's ready to go, but we're not because our building's not ready. That was my biggest concern. I just don't want to see us hurry up and we got to do this and we're going to throw all this stuff in the corner of a building for a few months till we get operational. So I hope that never comes back to us because I will not be in favor of doing something like that. I want to see our building get up as well as I think everybody on this council. So hopefully it hits at the same time, not where we're going to throw it up in a corner of a building across the street, because I will not be in favor of that. I want to see it done, be set up, as well as everybody does. So that was kind of what I was getting at. So hopefully your timing's right and it all comes together at the same time where our new building, hopefully, we see some movement over there in the next few months and all good to go. Thank you.
The motion is seconded. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. Thank you, Chief. Next item we have is item 8B, the Nicholas Ballfield turf, consideration of award of a contract for the Nicholas Homestead Park ballfield. Mr. Brimall.
Excuse me, Mayor. I just want you to know if I have a conflict entrance and some on the Little League board with this. Okay, thank you.
If you're going to put this in and work out there, we're going to pay you.
Well, that was the next agenda item.
Mayor and Council, thanks for having me tonight. Staff estimated $150,000 would be needed to renovate the Nicholas Homestead Park ballfields. Subsequently, the city council approved $150,000 for renovating the outfield areas of both ballfields at Nicholas Homestead Park as part of fiscal year 2015-2016 capital improvements program. In November 2015, staff issued an invitation to bid for renovating the turf on the ballfields. The scope of the project includes removing eight inches of existing soil and turf on each outfield, providing and placing the appropriate amount of mulch and topsoil to allow for compaction and to fill to existing grade. Laser leveling, excuse me, both fields for playability and proper drainage after mulch and topsoil is added. Providing and placing the appropriate square footage of sod and necessary fertilizers. All four of the contractors who attended the pre-bid meeting on December 7, 2015, were local. The following bids were received for consideration. Western Grade LLC, $128,000, $128,766,000. Jeez. Dustin, can you, can you help me, Dustin? Stand right to my left here. Yeah. Greenleaf. And Greenleaf Landscaping Maintenance, 208, 208-
Thousand.
Thousand. Goodness. $281. Thank you. Goodness gracious. Since Cholo has the largest Little League population in District One, it is staff's intention to have the Nicholas ballfields ready for play this spring, weather permitting. These fields will help to ease much of the strain on the city's other ballfields due to the popularity of Little League baseball and softball in Cholo. Staff has met with local and district league leadership and discussed possible tournament play on the Nicholas Homestead Park ballfields after the upgrades are made. These Little League officials provided direction and expressed that the fields, once completed, would make a great location for tournaments. To make the fields compliant for tournament play, a portion of the fencing will need to be replaced. This will be awarded under a separate contract. Nonetheless, the total project cost will not exceed the budget at $150,000. Also, to comply with some of the recommendations by the Little League, staff anticipates there might be some minor scope modifications resulting in a reduction to Western Grade's overall bid price, as previously stated. Staff recommends awarding the contract for the Nicholas Homestead Park ballfields turf renovation project to Western Grade LLC in an amount not to exceed, let's see if I can get this, $128,766.
I went to Cholo High School and I know that.
Got to get a master's degree not to be able to read that. And staff is available for any questions the council might have.
I just have a couple of comments. I'm glad to see that our local boys have jumped in there and got a word of the contract. The other two didn't submit a bid. You said there was four and I just see two. I'm just curious.
Correct.
So there are two.
Yeah.
That's nice to see. I think we all love to see the locals jump in there and get involved, so, thank you.
Any other questions? I'm just going to, you know, throw a little bit here for what we're doing to make these field up to par. And I know April is cold, it's snowing right now, turf is not growing. We'll have turf and I sure hope that that isn't the emphasis, that we turn this loose to play and not before the field is ready to be played upon. And so, you know, it's one of those things, and further maintenance, if we need to, you know, increase any maintenance in our budget, I hope that we do that when we're budgeting this coming year to make sure that we can keep this at a first-class field, you know, going forward so it will attract tournaments and more play here.
That's a good point, Mayor. I've spoken with staff about that very issue and actually, the modifications that we're making to this field are actually going to make it easier to maintain. And we're looking forward to the time when it is easier to maintain and for that possibility to have those tournaments on these fields.
The other thing, while we're doing this, have we given any thought to running electrical lines or anything in case we have to have scoreboards to meet Little League standards, having electrical lines run out where a scoreboard could be put up?
Yes. In subsequent years, it is in the capital infrastructure program planning. We've phased the lighting, the conduit, and all of those considerations into subsequent years. This was a CIP. This kind of is phase one. Conduit is phase two and lights are phase three.
No, but is there any conduit that needs to be put in while we have the ground tore up?
Not at this time.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Well, before I make the motion, and we're going to stay under the $150,000 even with, could that be something you should bring back to us while the ground's all tore up? I mean, can we do phase two? If we're just running conduit, I don't know why we can't hear some kind of figures while they're tearing up the ground. I think that's what the mayor was getting to. It just sounds like it makes sense and tear up the ground to dig. I know it's just a trench, but it just seems like maybe that's something that we should consider. Keep going forward with this, obviously, but-
We've actually, Vice Mayor, we've actually had some contractors out and had some estimates made and received those estimates and looked at them. They would need to be in a different phase because it's relatively expensive. There's no conduit in that area, so it would need to be trenched and put in the ground. And we have a plan moving- we have a plan moving on that to go in between the fields. So, actually, as they're dug up, we don't want the conduit going underneath the fields, it would be going in between the two, over there.
Vice Mayor.
I move to award the construction contact for Nicholas Homestead Park Ballfields turf renovation project to Western Grade LLC in an amount not to exceed-
$150,000?
$128,766, sorry.
Wasn't looking at my sheet.
We have a motion is our second, seconded by Councilmember Hatch, any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? See that that pass six to zero, thank you.
Oh, yeah, right.
Next item we have, scheduling a summary of current events, any council member wishing to share any current events may do so. Councilmember Alsop.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, one little thing, had an opportunity to go to the Robert Burns banquet this last Saturday and had a great time. Hopefully, they raised a lot of money for the women and children and adults around Navajo County and Apache County to protect them and heal them and get them fully recovered again, so it was a great banquet and hopefully it just created a lot of money for them, thank you.
Thank you, Crittenden, Vice Mayor.
Just a reminder, it's a few months away yet, but the city's anniversary and our fourth annual barbecue throwdown is coming up the first full weekend in May, so we'd like to see you all there on Saturday is the major event, but Friday you can come out and watch some of the, look at some of the pits and talk to some of the pit masters and get to know those guys and come out and have a fun day Friday, because we'll all be there, but Saturday is when the anniversary party starts, I think at 11-ish, somewhere in there, and have some barbecue and some fun and talk to some of the guys and girls.
Great. Anyone else? Just to give a report, we had an opportunity to go down to Taylor to the Mayor and Council Association meeting that we had last Thursday, I had an opportunity, I guess it was two Thursdays ago, I had an opportunity also to go through the new Walmart that Taylor's done, they've done a great job down there, it's going to be a great addition to their community. The city manager, city attorney, and councilmember Crittenden, and I was able to attend a legislative meeting where I was informed of some of the legislative things that are going in session at this time. Was disappointed that we didn't have very many of our local legislative people to come over and talk with us since we were on their turf, but that's their choice, so we'll remember that and we'll hold it against them, no, on that, but that's all we have, we're grateful for the opportunity, we have to be citizens in our community, and thank you. City manager.
Just a couple of things, there's a few tickets remaining for this Friday's popular daddy-daughter dance, it's from 6 to 8 p.m. on Friday, City Campus Gymnasium. If you are interested in tickets, call 532-4140. Next Monday, February 8, the Family Aquatic Center is hosting a Mardi Gras celebration fun night from 6 to 8 p.m. The Mardi Gras features carnival games, food, crafts, music, and prizes. It's $2 a person or $10 per immediate family for a family. And information on that is 532-4130. And finally, this, with the city sponsoring, we're trying to get, put together a concert series, and we're going to try a Neil Diamond tribute concert by a group called Diamond in the Rough on Friday, April 8, at 7:30 p.m. at the Sholo School District Auditorium. The tickets are $12 each and available at the Recreation Department at City Hall or at the Aquatic Center. Thank you.
Do we have something on our Diamondbacks opening?
The Diamondbacks, Diamondbacks Day will be April 9. And we don't have information on ticket prices, we will present that in a future meeting.
Coming up, okay, thank you. Any other meetings that need to be scheduled or?
Where'd you say that Neil Diamond thing was at?
At the School District Auditorium.
Seeing nothing else, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. So, moved by Vice, Councilmember Hatch, sorry.
Where's your hands?
All those in favor?
It wasn't me.
Any opposed? We, time adjourned.